Send them all of them, I said. His family was still in it, his wife was still around, obviously. And they wanted to do it for their own good, really. That's all they wanted to do. And finally, they got out of the picture, finally. It was not good. Okay. We don't have.
I'm sure Judy's on her way in.
Judy, uh, Judy planning to come?
Just as I said, I'm sure she's on her way in. And there, and there's another, look at. She's going to eat.
Yes, hi.
Nice to meet you, nice to meet you, baby. I didn't have a quote.
You have another quote now. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just gonna go to get a cup of water.
They were waiting for the store.
It's upstairs, there's a water cooler, you know. I'm trying to use this, but I can't take it out of. I wouldn't. Hustlers, just go upstairs, we'll see.
We want a cooler.
Yeah, alright. Right, like outside my office. Online, um, John Ryan will get here in a few minutes and we're waiting on Judy Kirman. Give me a couple of minutes.
What's the price of a four to a thousand, we see? You can't.
He said, he said the reason.
Just mentioned.
That you'd have to sell.
It's not quite.
It's too many. They can, uh, buy them over there.
Yeah, there it is. That's nice.
The original, which this time has rejected the past, which is very interesting. It's a partnership with Ham Happy Mandi. That's twenty-two. How do we reject that? Um, I don't remember whether it was Bill or his predecessor.
Would we reject it because there's a. To that, maybe that it's, doesn't fit our budget or?
It's. Working with a not-for-profit like that is not the easiest thing in the world. So why?
No, we've done a couple of those in Princeton with them, and well, it took years to. To get it done, or get it started.
Do you want to just start? Maybe Judy, something came up to you. We have one, so you take care of business, I mean.
Okay. It's a little after six. So.
Time to figure out why we haven't never met each other since then. And new and.
And I was way, for one or two of those. Ask people. Alright, well, I call the work. The regular and workshop hybrid meeting. Woodstock Planning Board for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. You have a quote? Up this year.
Well, not.
Okay, we have the minutes from November sixteenth. Okay, we're gonna have to make a motion to approve them. You have a second? A second here? Uh, okay, on favor.
Hi.
Alright. Communications and announcements. We have an email from Tenpans regarding concert. Regarding conserve, the word conserve, undefined in proposed subdivision regulations. We also have an email from Tenpans regarding the price of a four to a thousand. We have a number twenty-seven. We have an email from Jude Sauer regarding owner occupancy requirements for AD rules. We have an email from Ann Zilling regarding owner occupancy requirements for AD rules. And we have a letter from Up National LLC, basically saying they will not be proceeding with further filing. So on your new business, we just have.
So what do we do with three hundred? Stop them, stop us.
They're gonna stay up.
They're all gonna.
They're gonna stay. They're not gonna stop it because, um. Because essentially, because the Terramore Land is back up for sale. Um, yeah, um, the concern is that if you stop the push. That they'll, you know, come back and it's, oh, it's quiet and we'll have to restart it all up again. So apparently, what I read on, um, Facebook and Nextdoor was. That the push is just gonna continue and continue and continue. And now they're walking into the town of Ulster because apparently. That's all your building's supposed to be. That's where they're gonna be building. So because there was that small parcel that they wanted to put like the last four holes of the golf course in some town house. And so now Town of Ulster had given their, had said to Bill, you take over, you make the decision. Okay, we're giving, we're turning everything over to you. Remember that when that first happened, when they first came in the plan? There was something in the Freeman that said, with this Woodstock National, they're gonna be in Town of Ulster. Has given Woodstock.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, you lost, she showed.
Yeah, it was in the Freeman. It was, of course, one or two.
I mean, I talked to a few people from the Town of Ulster, no applications were submitted, so no one was there yet.
This was moving in the north, this is in the Freeman.
About Terramore or Woodstock National?
No, they're not always ready.
Yeah, it was, but it was. I mean, uh, well, I'm telling you, that's not correct, but that's, but I'm telling you, that's where the plot is in the Freeman. I'm gonna move on from the Woodstock National. John Ryan was stuck in court all day, so he'll be here at six fifteen, which gives us about five minutes. So I'm gonna wrap up, uh, just unfinished business, just because tactically, thank you, Woodstock National, for contacting us and letting us know, but no application for ever since.
You wanna go to the unfinished business?
I think so, right?
Okay. Alright, so we have to approve a draft resolution for PEC, which is the S U T twenty-three oh sixty-five. So.
Second?
Sorry, I can't remember that one.
What was the short-term rental that was owner occupied and it just added?
Oh, yes, yes.
Grayden, is that a second guess yet?
Uh, yes. It is. On favor? Okay, how about a little post?
Of course, I have not heard of it, and I've said this before.
It's owner occupied.
I don't care.
So do you want a nay?
I want a nay.
Okay. Okay, and one more thing. Uh, Jennifer and James went on a site visit for Maron. The plans were pretty beautiful from what we saw, so, um, here we can schedule a public hearing.
Yes, I already said that.
Maron's perfect, sounded perfect. Okay, let's schedule a public hearing. Hi!
I know, I'm so sweet.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Nice to see you.
Has a, has a.
Maybe you want to. I haven't seen you in a strong age, at least.
Yeah, well, Zoom and all that. Sorry, I didn't mean it. Okay, so we, uh, we've got the meeting open, we've gone through all the first part, and we are now to the workshop meeting. Which is Conservation Subdivisions, Part Two. Follow-up to August thirty-first planning, we'll workshop questions and answers with Mr. John Ryan's, Grant Ryan's O R P. And the relevant documents for Chapter two seventy-eight, New York Consolidated Law, Town Law. Chapter two oh two, subdivision of land, Town of Woodstock Code. Town of Kukxaki, New York, Chapter one seventy-four, subdivision of land, Article seven, conservation subdivision. John, so it is, okay.
All those documents, if anybody would like and didn't get, and I emailed them, but I have some all copied, it's not.
How can we need them?
Do we need them?
I wouldn't mention.
Thank you. Since you've already cut down the trees.
Yeah.
So I have a little, I like the.
You're supposed to be online. You're supposed to be a Woodstock.
I heard something, though. Thank you.
I don't need to be online, too.
No, that's why I.
Campaign here. I watched her machine, but.
I'm getting along to you.
It's good.
Is that joint? I recognize that joint, that's kind of.
Yeah, it is, right? Oh, I wasn't, Melissa's doing that. You may have already. These are the, um, I'm John, by the way. Hi, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. These are the two things, uh, two documents in this package. You guys, I think, went to the Estuary till then. So anyways, this is just the, these are the powerpoints that. Thanks, who's the planner, speaker there, that. So just a wish of just to keep with you. I think it's a pretty good summary.
Okay.
So, you know, sort of the conservation subdivision subject. One will apologize in advance, if I'm a little bit fazzled, it's because. Some needing proceeding papers that had to be uploaded to the court today. And we had some pickups being uploaded. And that's why I'm a little bit late, and I apologize for that. And it's interesting, you.
You did not fall asleep.
I did not fall asleep, and we worked till four o'clock in the morning last night, so.
Thank you for being.
Um, well, that's all right, but, um. Maybe later we can talk a little bit about it, because it's a, it's a client, it's a planning board, and their. Their challenge is to try to overturn a preliminary plat approval for a conservation subdivision. Alright, but, um. But anyway.
Interesting.
Yeah, so. You guys are an educated audience, you know a lot about this. You've already, you know, you did Fan Acres, so you've already got a ton of mud on your boots.
We've got one place in here that wasn't.
Okay. Okay, what's the best way to start, so that we're not talking about? I mean, I, what I thought maybe is we can go through some of the basics.
Yeah.
And then we can riff off of whatever comes up, and we can talk about questions. Melissa sent me.
Can I have a set? Do you have an extra set?
Yeah, sure, yeah. And I have more, in case there's, um, somebody.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Deborah, I didn't recognize you ever.
Nobody recognized her behind that.
Kids here, kids there.
So I know there, and we'll get to them. I know. You had some questions, and Melissa sent me, Deborah had some questions, that sent me. I think I'm gonna be able.
My Deb was in mine.
Okay, and I think I'm gonna be able to answer most of them. One set required me to get a little bit. Into, um, the law, I didn't get to that stuff, but I can always come back. And we can talk about it, so.
The law, you mean?
Well, well, I have got your subdivision law, your subdivision rights, and then Deborah was kind enough to send me what's being worked on, or the law, so.
We didn't really.
In the inner world, it would sort of take a look ahead at that, and, I mean, we've seen some of it before.
That's what I called Melissa.
I said, we're only doing existing with John, right?
Okay, well, there's a, there's a certain value to that.
Complete legality.
You don't know what's gonna happen.
I'm saying legality, John Ryan, that was funny.
So. So anyway, uh, just to sort of get us started, so. Um, subdivision's kind of gone along, we continue on, that we've, so conservation subdivision is a way to. Be separated land smarter and with more awareness of and consideration given to the land. And it's kind of gone on the same arc. Planning-wise, that we've sort of followed generally with environmental law, where, you know, back in, when I, in the seventies, where. You know, you just dumped it in the river, dumped it on the ground, and somebody figured out later, you know, how to, what were we gonna do about it? And we decided, the secret, that we're gonna try to get in front of those things, and think about what the adverse impacts are. Early in the process, during the planning stages, and then try to integrate. Elements into the planning process that would avoid the negative results that we've had. So in the beginning. You know, subdivision, uh, back when I was a young lawyer, you know, subdivision was all about. Uh, grids and, you know, just taking the density and developers usually just maximizing the density, laying the grid out over the property. The only thing that really mattered at the time was whether the, you know, the soil perked, and, you know, they're gonna have water, and. Not much, not as much consideration was given to the environmental, you know, what is the land like, and. You know, how do we, how do we take the subdivision and sort of. You know, build around the resources on the land. And of course. You know, back in those days, you know, all, back in those days, there was more land. And, um, you know, we like to say now that all the easy properties are all gone. And so when people are coming in with subdivision applications, like Fan Acres, there's a lot going on on the property. And you have to try to figure out a way to accommodate those things. So with, with. Conservation subdivisions. There's a force, there's kind of a generally accepted four-step process. For, uh, conservation subdivisions, and it involves ident, the first thing you're doing. Is identifying the open space on the land. You're looking. The goal of conservation subdivisions is to really understand the land where the, where the subdivision is proposed. And that's the starting point, the core, that that education about the land is what instructs. Everything else that goes on, that follows from, in the design process. So the first step is open space, and it's figuring out. You know, they, they, they break it up into preliminary open space and secondary open space. Preliminary open space are air, uh, areas, the first priority. They're very, uh. It's a sort of obvious, uh, preservation areas, because they're of the. Resources that are on those spaces on the land, or they're constrained in a way. That, you know, you know, twenty percent slopes, you're not gonna put something on there. Um, and then there are secondary open spaces, which is a rung down from that. Um, that, uh, is talking, and, and that's where you're looking at other spaces, other spaces to add. Uh, to preserve on the property that isn't as obvious as the, uh, preliminary open space. And you, um. You take a look at that, at those areas, and you understand the rest of the property, and then what follows from that are the subsequent steps. Where you're, um, thinking about where access can be, you're configuring. Streets and roads, and then you, um, you end up getting to the point where you're drawing lot lines. And, um, so the process starts with, um. Thinking about the property first, and that's really probably one of the most important. It's probably the most important thing to take away from the process, and then everything, everything flows from that. The, um, I would say that the second. Most important thing, I mean, there's a lot about conservation subdivisions that aren't that different from, you know, things that you're thinking about, just the nuts and boltsy kind of things that are. The same as a conventional subdivision, but I would say that the biggest. Difference, or maybe the other biggest thing that you need to think about. And Deborah brought this up in a lot of the questions, and it was the, uh, pretty, it was a theme of the questions that came in after the. Estuary Program Seminar is. The, you know, how's the open space that you end up selecting for the project? How does that? Get, how does that get preserved and managed long-term?
Can I have the real short question before that? Our primary and secondary open spaces, is that a term of art? I googled it, I googled it, and nothing came up.
Well, if you look like in, um. In, in, in these publications from the Department of State on subdivision, and they're discussing conservation subdivision, they quote Rand, Rand alarm.
It came up in questions about the zoning, that you didn't define anything.
Yeah.
That's in there, and so I just wanted to know that in fact it is a term of art?
Yes.
And that's.
And there is it, and there are descriptions of it out there that can be had.
Good or bad, no.
Okay, well, that's good to know, he doesn't know everything, you know, I try hard to stay away from it, but, um.
I did not ask chap G K T, although.
Okay, well, I'm sure they will come up with something, but I can give you that, um.
No, that's fine. Just wanted to confirm that it is, in fact, the term of art.
Yeah.
Great.
So the preservation of the conserved land, that's, that's the, it's the hardest part, in a way. I mean, it's, it's the most obvious part, but. Um, so Deborah asked about what the options are for that, and so conservation easement is up here. As, in terms of the desirability of the options, and then the next rung down is deed restrictions, which is like down here. And then, down here below the table is, let the HOA take care of it, or. There really, there aren't really any other tools beyond that to, uh. To.
That's very interesting.
Well, you got, you have to remember that you're a planning board, right? And, well, so you can step back even further, so. The authority to zone, to regulate the use of land, you know, it's not something that municipalities have inherently. You only have as a municipality, the regulatory authority that's given to you by the state. And back when they first started doing zoning. It was recognized that. The government being able to tell you how you can use your land was an incursion on a pretty well entrenched traditional property right. And that if it was going to be allowed, it wasn't gonna be allowed to be something that would just. Happen indiscriminately, and so. The courts have always said that, um, they were gonna be very careful, and they're, they're sort of strictly construed the. Uh, the authority that you're given, so. What happened with zoning was a decision, it ended up getting upheld, the first zoning laws in the courts. On the basis that the community good that was gonna be accomplished from zoning outweighed the incursion into property rights. And that sort of balancing test. Has, as time has gone along, from like the twenty, the, the first zoning laws, I'm pretty sure came into effect in the twenties, and. There, as time has marched on. You know, you know what the zoning law used to look like when you first went on the zoning board, and like, you know, now they're like this, so zoning's getting, and land regulations, regulations is getting bigger and bigger. And at each step along the way, as communities try to reach further into the world of regulating. There, there's always that balancing test, when there are challenges, that you always have to be able to justify what you're trying to do, and the community good always has to. Outweigh the incursion into, uh, property rights. That's why you guys are probably familiar with it, and there's a rule in the courts that. If your zoning law is, or if your zoning law is ambiguous. I mean, there's a particular provision of the zoning law that's capable of being interpreted reasonably, interpreted more than one way. The break always goes in favor of the property owner and against the municipality. And that's, and that is born of, what we're saying is that, you know, the, the government, the courts are saying, if we're gonna let you go into this area. You're gonna have to do it very carefully. So getting back to, um, subdivisions. Um, the courts are very clear that what you have a right as a municipality to regulate is the use of land. Not the activities that take place on land.
Excuse me, sorry, no, the words.
In other words, you can regulate, um, whether somebody can do a particular business on a piece of property, but you can't tell the person. How to run their business. And this comes up in gray areas. Um, in zoning, where one of the frequent battlegrounds for this is hours of operation, okay? And there's a little exception's been carved out for that, where the courts will let, uh, you regulate hours of operation if. You can show that that's being done for the purpose of minimizing the impact of a particular use on neighboring properties.
So like the sound regulations, am I?
Yeah, yeah, and there's a, I don't know, I forget the name of the bar that is one of the same cases on that.
Station Bar.
Yeah, and, um.
Army, and I mean, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, but no, but the, but the general rule is, you can't regulate how somebody conducts their business. So you have to remember, and the, the nexus between this and conserved land is that, again, you can regulate the use, but when you start getting into the activities. That can be done on that land later. It's harder to reach that.
But that's a very simple go-to. It's done all the time.
Well, what do you mean, regulating like hours, or?
No, attempting to make that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
Talking about residential properties, for the most part.
Well, not all time.
Yeah, I know, but it's a clear question when it comes to.
Yeah, but it's hard, so let, let's just go through the options, and you'll see. So the, the reason that a conservation easement is the, is the best, is because. So typically, you, you don't have, and you don't have as a, you don't have any enforcement capability. Okay, so once that, uh, approval resolution leaves your hands, and the map gets filed in the county clerk's office, you guys are out of the game. And, um, I mean, you can try to reach into the future with conditions, and we can talk about that a little bit later. Which, yeah, and then you pass the baton to the zoning enforcement officer. That's really where the decisions get made in the future, and the restriction of the, the scope of conditions and all that, but. What makes a conservation easement the best tool is because what happens is somebody has to hold that easement, a land trust has to hold that easement. And when they hold that easement, what they're really doing is they're volunteering to step up and to become an active steward for that property forever. And, um, so I was on the, I was on the, um, Board of Directors of Winnicke Land Trust for many years, and. I'm on the Board of Directors. Catskill Center, we have a land trust arm, and I'm on the stewardship committee. You're. That's, you know, you're existing to be able to, uh, go in and take the easement and preserve property, and then after that, every year. You know, you have to go out, you gotta, you have to monitor what's, there's a baseline study that gets done on the conservation easement, which document. Documents the condition of the property at the time of the easement, so they photograph every. Piece of the property, and there are long reports about the condition, and that's the starting point. And then every year, somebody from the land trust either visits the property, or they send a drone over, and they have, and they watch and maintain, and if something is, um. If something's being done to violate the easement, they can go to court to enforce it. And so somebody sits in that seat of taking an active role. In trying to be a steward for this property, they kind of take over from the planning board. When you go down to the next tour, which is a deed restriction, which is just putting a provision in a deed where you're saying, okay, in the future. We're gonna deed this common space over to the homeowners association, and you're not allowed to do. A, B, C, and D on the property, which is really what a deed restriction does. It's very difficult in a deed restriction. To try to force future owners of property to assume affirmative obligations. So you can really mostly say no. And. The problem with deed restrictions is, I don't know, how many of you read your deed? Or remember reading your deed? Okay, good for you, that doesn't happen a lot. And.
True story.
And especially as, you know, um, you're, especially as time goes along, and there's an attenuation in time between the time those deeds go down. Especially in, um, you know, there, sometimes it just doesn't get remembered. But the harder or the more difficult obstacle with deed restrictions is there's nobody that's really responsible. Affirmatively, for making sure, uh, that. Affirmatively for making sure uh that. The property is treated in the way that was envisioned at the time that it was concerned. The way that deed restrictions work normally is that the people who have. The option to, that had the legal authority to enforce those are the people that are affected by the deed restriction. So if you live around, you're a neighbor to the um, to the property, but anybody else who has a reference to the deed restriction in their deed. But it's pretty rare that neighbors, I mean, you gotta really care a lot about what's going on in the property. Start paying a lawyer to go to court to try to enforce a deed restriction on another piece of property. The practical impact is it just really doesn't happen a lot.
So you're talking about, you've got a parcel, you've got a lot that has been cut out in the subdivision and part of it is restricted.
Yes.
Okay.
Or that reasons, it's, a lot of times that, that, if, if, if it's a big enough subdivision. A lot of times that property will get deeded to a homeowners association.
That's the other part.
Common elements. Sometimes it'll stay maybe with the original subdivision.
I guess the reason I, I wondered is, have there been cases where the fact that that kind of restriction is on part of someone's property is considered to take?
No, because they, because they uh, you were um.
You own it, but you can't use it too much. So that's.
Well, it depends. There's a whole range, you know, just like with conservation easements. A conservation easement doesn't mean, the default is not that you can't do anything on the property. Typically, um, in conservation easements that are not associated with subdivisions. Is very often a building envelope or, you know, land trusts try hard. To make conservation easements attractive to people and they try to do, because that's the way you get easements in the door. And that's the way we preserve land. And so if you're too draconian, you're not gonna be attractive to anyone. And therefore you're not, you're gonna miss opportunities to preserve land.
So something more than hiking trails?
Yeah, yeah, sometime and, and um, I think Deborah, in one of her questions, talking about open space. Uh, various types of open space, so. Just leaving a, a forested area, a natural is one. And in other places, maybe on that open space divisions to put a playground or some more kind of active use. The, the definition of open space that's in the subdivision regulations in Woodstock now says something along the lines of. You know, there has to be a, a bend kind of a community.
Yeah, yeah, you can have a golf course as a public.
Yeah, yeah, to the um, property. But the true, but the, that goes back to, you know, the quality of. The type of conservation that you're doing, the land, all, you, it's gonna be very difficult to get a land, to find a land trust that's gonna hold this property. It's gonna have a playground down there.
Precisely.
I mean, that's the biggest problem that I'm seeing and uh, for conservation easements is. Um, you have, is getting, is, you have to have property that's going to be preserved, that's of sufficient value.
Yeah.
To attract a, a land trust to, it has to be big enough and it has to be, because I remember at Winnicke. When I was on the, on the committee where we're making decisions about, you know, we would have developers knock on the door and say, hey. We need you to hold this, you know, we need somebody to hold the easement for this open space or else they won't approve our subdivision. And we want you guys to do it.
Well, I talked to the, who was, I'm concerned see about possibly buying something to donate to them. But they want things that are out of my, out of my reach, anything small enough or it's in the wrong place or, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it has to fit within your mission and it has to be. Um, you know, land trusts or, you know, everybody, I don't know, I, there are a few rich ones out there, but not that many.
How do they pay land trusts?
How do they get paid?
To monitor things and look at the drone rings and.
They raise money, they're not the property organizations. They have to qualify with the land trust alliance. Um, which is actually a pretty stringent process. That's the National Land, uh, Land Trust Organization. And, but it's raising money and also a lot of land trusts request an endowment from the property donor. Uh, of an easement. They'll say like, we need you to make a donation of ten thousand dollars. That we're gonna use that money to try to stave off some of our. Obligation to take care of, monitor this property forever. But these are real, easements are new, you know, uh. Nobody really knows how practical it's gonna be. You know, talking about forever is a dice opposition, you know.
So it's a small property and there's no money involved, it's almost unenforceable.
It's gonna be hard to get a land, a land trust to. I mean, I know of another land trust now that agreed to um. Getting involved in a situation where there was a, there, there's a piece of property that is gonna be developed with a solar farm. And it seems like, I know it seemed like a good idea at the beginning, but the, the um. There's a difference. So when, when somebody comes to you at a land trust and says, somebody like you. I care about this piece of property and I care about making sure that it's preserved in a certain way. And I'm gonna, I'm coming to you, land trust, I'm gonna donate to you or I'm gonna give you an easement. That's gonna accomplish that preservation. So you have a donor for the easement, that's somebody that is. Motivated to take care of the property, okay? People that are being forced, for want of a better term. To put a conservation easement on a piece of property because it's the price of doing whatever else they wanna do with the property. They don't have any of that motivation. And in this particular, in this particular instance, our office is representing the land trust. And we're negotiating the conservation easement with the part of the solar farm company. And the whole, the negotiations dragged on for six months because the whole thing is them always wanting to go their back doors into the easement. To try to be able to do other things in the future on the property because they don't really believe in the easement. They, it's just the easement is something that they have to deal, it's a yoke around their neck and the price of getting their.
Is there a tax benefit or not?
The reason that you can't take a tax benefit on a con, on a conservation easement if it's a required element of proof of my municipal board. So they don't, so the, so the taxi, the tax benefit isn't there. But there's a, you know, that's another thing that as a planning board, you have to be sort of aware of that. Because where the donor of the easement isn't that motivated, it does make a difference. And um, changes the formula a little bit, you know. So easements are the, are the best tool to use. But they're not gonna, the, an easement's not going to work for practical reasons in every situation. And, and sometimes you're gonna have to drop down to a deed restriction because that's just. The best tool that's available to you, you know, put a deed restriction on it and try to attach. Some conditions that are gonna live on in the future. That give your, your zoning enforcement officer a chance to maybe do some monitoring. Or at least respond to a complaint if somebody comes in and does that. Um, but that's really.
Now, HO, ten acres, we did homeowners assoc, homeowners association.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that was, that was a voluntary thing on the part of the landowner.
Yes.
But you're saying that's the least attractive and I can see how it might be.
Well, yeah, well, what we did, so what we did with, that brings up another big point. So I talked about authority and you, and you know, as a board, you can only do. Exercise the authority you've been given, but there also are instances where applicants will volunteer to do something. And if they volunteer to do something, you don't have to have the authority because they're volunteering to do it, you're not forcing them to do it. So one of the things we did in Fan Acres was, we asked that applicant had to form a homeowners association. And you have to have a prospectus and, and HOA rules and bylaws. So we asked them to bake into those bylaws and rules. Some things about the area that, that is gonna be preserved to try to create. At least every time somebody else came onto the board in the future, they're gonna read the bylaws and they're gonna say, oh, we're gonna be aware. The deed restriction is out there and this is what's intended for that. And at least it raises the profile of that issue. So that people know about it and can try to, it gives you a chance to have at least somebody paying attention to it. Attention to it going forward.
From what you're saying, if the town law requires a conservation subdivision. Then the builder and or the homeowners may not have the same motivation in the case of the fan.
Yeah, I mean, and that's right. And I mean, a conservation subdivision is, is definitely the preferred alternative. It just because of what we were talking about.
Easement is.
An easement is, but even conservation subdivision versus conventional subdivision, you know.
Yeah, it's, I'm really asking about enforcement maybe.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all about the enforcement and it's something that we're, we're still trying, we're still trying to figure it out, to be honest with you. Because it's sort of, um, you know, the idea of conservation subdivisions isn't uh, old. And, you know, we're just seeing generally less subdivisions. It's not like the eighties where. You know, there were like, well, you know, and that, that was like seventy percent of the planning boards, Docket. Um, the one, uh, Lineback just did its first one, just last year, first conservation subdivision.
Really?
Yeah, and we haven't had a subdivision in Lineback in a long time.
Well, this is the biggest, Fan Acres is the biggest thing we've had in ages.
I think you guys did a great job on Fan, I mean, Fan Acres, there was a lot on, there was a lot to continue. Take a look at this map.
Yeah.
And you can just see what's going on on there, but I think you did a great job of. Achieving the goal of the process.
The core question for me is that Article seventy-eight, which is the state approved um, cluster subdivision. Which is not all conservation subdivision. It's based on the concept that unlike Fan, where they made huge lots because they couldn't develop the wetlands. So they just made some big lots.
Yeah.
Under the Article two seventy-eight, the idea is that you can create little lots.
Yes.
And so that, since you can't develop all this wetlands and everything else, you can still get a whole bunch of little lots.
Yes, that, yep, that's room theory. But it's actually, but would, that's true, but also the, I think. The larger sort of goal of cluster subdivision and conservation subdivision is for there to be flexibility. To try to look at the property first and sort of figure out what works. And sometimes tiny aren't gonna be the answer. Um, because you have to remember that conservation subdivision is only gonna get done. If, there has to be a, a market behind the, for the end product.
Yeah.
So, but the idea behind conservation subdivisions is to try to give, there's more labor authority for planning boards under that. And to try to give you more flexibility from a planning standpoint. To try to come up with a subdivision design that is built around. The characteristics of the land and the natural resources on.
You're still retaining an average lot size that suits the zone.
Yeah, yeah, and the last conservation subdivision that I was involved with, the lots are about two and a half acres apiece. On a original lot that was about two, um, it's five lots on an original lot that was two hundred acres.
So what, what happened to the ownership of the rest of it?
Uh, it's remained with, uh, so the, the subdivider has a big lot that um, she's gonna keep. And then the, that's about ninety-nine acres. And then there's gonna be a subdivision, there's gonna be a conservation easement on forty-five acres. And then there's a little area where the new lots are.
So does it come out to an average lot size that is suited to the zone or they weren't even wearing?
It's the, the part that's below, it's allowed, the lot sizes below, it's allowed, the five acre lots are what's allowed in the zone.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is, if you average the little lots and the big lot, does it come out to five acres?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Because that's kind of the way we've been thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah. I need the planners to do the math on that.
But, um, so John, does it usually come from the landowner to ask for a conservation subdivision? Or does the planning board, can the planning board require that legally?
Your zoning law can require a conservation subdivision, but it's mostly an elective. I don't remember what it is in Woodstock, but it's mostly.
It is an elective.
Yeah, it's mostly elective because of the variables that we're talking about in terms of. You, you know, you, you have to have open spaces worth preserving. Now, a lot of open spaces are worth preserving, but there are some that are not. There are some places where this is a good place for us to get some housing density and we ought to do it. Um, so I, 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 it's mostly elective in the places where I've, I've seen. And it's also, because not every property is conducive to it. And also, you know, having an applicant that's motivated to wanna go do a conservation subdivision. It really has to, as a practical matter, um. You know, what, what they talk about in sort of the um. Ideal, which is that somebody wants to subdivide their property, they don't really formulate that much in the way of ideas. They come in, they have a sketch plan and they talk with you with sketch plan and then everybody figures out with sketch plan. Whether it should be a conventional or a conservation subdivision. I, 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 that doesn't really happen in practicality that, that often, at least in my experience. And what happens is somebody who owns a piece of property sits down with the zoning law and they look at it. Conservation subdivision, regular subdivision, they sit down with their engineer, they start figuring out. You know, because there's the money pieces of it that, you know, matter. And they start figuring out what really makes the most sense. And they're thinking about the four-step process before they even come in. And because otherwise, you know, if you think about a concert, you know, you, you write something up in concept as a convention subdivision. Then you're told to do a conservation subdivision, you gotta go back and you're sort of starting, you're starting over again.
That's kinda happened with Fan Acres.
Yeah.
Well, they had, you know, they had other plans. They came to us and we said those plans don't work.
Well, also, that, that's, but also your leverage is gonna be dictated by the characteristics of the property. So.
Yes, and.
Fan Acres was so loaded with natural resources and environmental constraints. There really wasn't a lot of room to argue about that.
And they came in knowing that. I mean, their, their, their mission statement, their narrative, you know, from the gate.
But they had seven acre lots that was narrow and there was a wetland right across the middle of it.
Welcome to the planning land.
Yeah, yeah. And so those are things that are gonna, that are gonna be a factor in. You know, with the choices that were made and, and how whether a, a planning board can push a particular applicant in a direction. If it looks like it's something that makes sense.
So John, presently under Article two seventy-eight, which exists.
Yeah.
In order for that to be done in the town, requires a town board to approve, not the planning board.
Yeah, well, the town board has to authorize it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So my understanding of that would be that before they even come to us. Because we're doing stuff ahead, we're the town board first, right?
No, one question I might ask, could the town board give the planning board. Approval to do that kind of thing as a general.
So the way it usually is set up is that conservation subdivision is an option in your zoning law. Or in your subdivision regulations, subject to meeting a set of criteria. Okay, and if you're a landowner and you meet the set of criteria that's been established. Then the option to do a conservation subdivision is open to you. And you come in and do it.
And there's nothing wrong with the town planning board suggesting it.
That's correct. If you're at a sketch plan.
Yeah.
And we're looking at a piece of property that's saying to you, hey.
That's one pusher to a town board.
Yeah, well, the town board doesn't have anything to say about it. If it's a trace to be made by the applicant. Then the person, the, the party that you wanna push to.
Like two different things, yeah, two, they're kind of two different things.
The town, the town board gives you the authority and then they're out of the game.
That's what I.
Right, yeah, kind of, yeah, what, you're going more conservation, yes, absolutely, the planning board has the right. But if it came in with a requirement of a clustered subdivision, we wanna do under. But if it came in with a requirement of a clustered subdivision, we wanna do undersized lots. They would require a town board approval before it even came to us.
Right, and, and at that same stage, when you're thinking about whether a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Whether a bit of, a particular project should be channeled in that direction. It, it's not too early to be thinking about, how is the, already to be thinking about. Okay, if it goes in this direction, how's this open space gonna be preserved?
Yeah.
Is this the kind, you know, one of the things I suggest to clients is that's the time to be sending an applicant off. To talk to a land trust and sit down with them and say, here's the property, you know, the planning board urging us to think about this. Is this something that you'll be interested in if we do it? Because that's something you need to know, we, we've seen some, we, we're involved in one situation. This was in Pleasant Valley over in Dutchess County where they just, the planning board just came up with. Uh, requiring a conservation subdivision very late in the process. Uh, and the person who owned the property had to start going around and knocking on doors. To try to find someone who would take the easement. And there were problems with the, with the property that, that made it, holding the easement not so attractive, so.
So, so what if it's mandatory? What if it's in the code and if it's larger than a certain size, it has to be done that way?
I'm not sure that, I'd have to look at it, because I'm not sure we can require it all the time.
Why you look at the judge code, John?
Yeah. How, how, I, I'm sorry if I don't.
If it's larger, if it's five acres, five lots or more, it has to be a conservation subdivision. And if somebody has been.
Regardless of, well, what if it's not land that needs to be.
Yeah, regardless of whether the land is worthy of conservation.
I would, you know, to look at the land and see what conservation value is. And you, and as it says, with primary and secondary, uh, conservation.
Area, yeah.
Look at the process that you described.
But there's a premise that there are primary and secondary on the land. In this town, that might be a reasonable premise.
And I think that was what it was based on, I'm sorry to.
A survey of the.
If the nation.
Potentially subdivided.
Needs some environmental, uh, uh, what do you call it? Um, uh, with G I S, we looked at the.
Yeah, yeah.
What's it, what's the environmental?
Parts that are large enough to be subdivision.
Large enough, looks like there would be significant sensitive conservation areas. So that having a conservation subdivision required would make sense if it's a major subdivision. When we move to it, it's minor, but more than fifteen acres, the planning board has the discretion. To require an answer both a conventional flat and a conservation flat. And then you guys can look at it and say, wow, fifteen acres, whatever, twenty-five.
I, 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 I think if.
That was based on Coxack.
Yeah.
For five acres, shouldn't five acres, I mean, five lots shouldn't be a trigger. The trigger should be if it's got enough stuff to be conserved.
Well, that's the question, if we, and that's what.
Well, it, it hasn't done some triage, makes a difference. But it just still would remain to be seen, because there are lots of other, so you can look and, and, and.
They're from the gate.
You can look and see whether there's open space there, but also later on, from an engineering standpoint. You know, the soil's got a perk in the right places and, you know, there are other things that.
Basement, building up the wall.
Yeah, need, and, you know.
We also did the, I'm sorry, position. What, my other question, which is hypothetical, but if you're doing, um, net buildable acre calculation. Step it from the subdivision and you're looking at what are the buildable areas on the land. Right, so you're already looking at things like, uh, septic and, you know.
Row and access and.
And all those different.
Slopes and wet.
And to, so, yeah, comes off of the whole list to go, to, before you even start to just see what is actually buildable. So, that, there is that piece of it and the two can work together, was the idea.
Yeah, well, if, if you have that kind of information. That makes a big difference versus not having any mapping in your town where you're just. Yeah, well, that makes a big difference, because you're not starting from scratch.
And as a matter of fact, Tom Hines developed an algorithm for me that we can do slopes about twenty-five percent.
You have a lot of, um.
Yeah, but you're still gonna have to take on the, you know, it'll, you'll still be taking on the problem about. How the open spaces are gonna be preserved.
Absolutely, right.
And, um, I don't know, is there, is there? An interest in the town taking on those kind of responsibilities very much?
Good, I mean.
I haven't met any towns that are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've met towns that are very earnest about wanting to, about conservating subdivision and accomplishing the goals. But it's a big commitment.
Right, yeah.
A big commitment.
So what's the, what's the major difference between? Developing a piece of property that we do now, we take out the wetlands, we take out the steep slopes, we take out the streams, the buffers. None of that can be developed, so whatever's left, that's what you work with. What's the difference between that and creating a sub, uh?
The major difference is that what you described would usually consider to be, um, you know, the, uh, primary open space.
Which, which those wetlands are under the obligation.
By default, you still have to get a lot of lots out of the property if the owner wants to do it.
Yeah.
But the zoning says it's possible based on the total parcel.
Yeah, and it's the flexibility that comes with con, with cluster and conservation subdivision design. Be able to make smaller lots, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but also, if you're using net buildable acreage, the number of lots that the person could, that the developer can create is smaller. Because you're doing the calculation of how many lots based on the net buildable acreage, not on the whole property.
Yeah, yeah, but that's probably all you had anyway, as a practical matter.
Um, that's not how it's been working. If somebody had, I mean, if Fanakers had wanted to have forty houses on that, they could have.
Well, now there's a, you know, you.
As a practical matter, as a practical matter, maybe not, because they'd have to cut it into five acre lots. And some of them might not build, a lot of them would not be.
Right.
The town of Woodstock is, is special, as, as far as town goes, because we have the wetlands and what are of course won. We have the scenic overlay, so you guys as a planning board, I mean, when this first came, I've had many conversations with Deborah. They do this, they do this, planning board discretion, they do this, they do this.
Well, the, the advantage is, is if the, if, if there's ten acres of wetlands, that's under the town supervision. You don't need, you don't need somebody else to look after it.
And now you're, but now with the new Supreme Court decision, which has removed a lot of federal weapons of regulatory authority. It's even more important.
So it's not a mandatory situation, they really haven't built any lots, so you have maybe, you know, conservation based development, which is another. Way of looking at this, I guess, but it used to be, that's what they call it, conservation based development, more, more than. Whether it's a subdivision or not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can use the same template to really look at any kind of development.
So, so if you have a, um, an area that you're trying to preserve and it's, and it's put into a, um, an easement. Or not an easement, um.
Preferred way. Oh, an easement, yeah.
And there's wetlands in there, now you've appointed somebody that's gonna overlook this easement. Does the town still have the authority to?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, the town can go in and say, you're on the wetlands, you gotta get out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though it's part of the easement, I want to hope.
Yes. Yeah, overlapping jurisdiction there.
Okay, so I guess again, the main question is, do you think that the planning board has the legal right to require the subdivision? I mean, the conservation subdivision.
Yeah, I didn't know the, the answer to that offhand, but.
Under the current law, I would bet we don't.
Yeah.
Under the proposal, we would absolutely would. I mean, that would be the default option.
But we don't, but we don't even know it.
Yeah, I think it's about that.
No, I mean, if it's legal.
Well, it wouldn't be proposed if it were not legal. Man wouldn't have worked with.
Our job wouldn't have.
And you wouldn't have looked at it, I mean, so.
Well, I recall I've looked at that issue, but I know that, I know that Nann probably actually does know the answer to that.
Yeah, but I do know that there are towns with conservation, mandatory conservation subdivisions. So this is not a one-off or something.
Well, yes, the only, only thing to remember though is that, just generally, is that, just be, when I was a young lawyer. My old lawyer lost, I, I was saying, oh my gosh, the municipality X, they're doing this. And he said, oh, fifty percent of what municipalities do is illegal, they just don't get called on it. So, I don't know that that's, didn't turn out to be true in my experience, but it just, but it. The illustration is that something can be done, it's, and you can think it's legal, do the vetting. But until it gets challenged and suspended.
Seven-eight.
So.
But it's worth looking at Kipoff and finding out.
Well, isn't it the case that Coxacky has this kind of a mandatory?
I don't know, I can talk to Nann about it and, uh, I've, in planning circles. I'm sure that this is a question that's been asked before, because it makes a big, you know, it makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
And, and it's, it presents, as we just discussed, it presents issues. Because the kind of bank of knowledge that Woodstock has about the land within the town is unusual.
Yeah, it's not just me, I mean, my data comes from the Hudson study and then.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of communities.
And those maps are our model.
Yeah, a lot of communities haven't done that, or they haven't kept the, they haven't kept the data.
So there's gotta be a big difference between towns, uh, that don't have wetland laws, don't have.
And don't have any knowledge about, they're either in a potentially survivable properties are in the town.
Look at sorridies and the terror more thing, yeah.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have, ha- have any of that if they'd have the kind of wetland law that we did.
Yeah, I mean, that's an end of the country if you need that wetland law and look at it as a model.
Exactly.
I'm trying to find out, well, I have not been able to find out who did the original map, because I wanna get it into the G I S system.
Oh, wow.
The only way to do it apparently is to sit there with the PDF and draw.
Oh, my God.
Just what the guy that I, the intern that I got from Lasser apparently did.
Wow.
I'm looking for a copy of the law that says this percent slope and that amount of drainage area and, you know. Um, Jackie said she would try to find it for me, because it's not in the main code. It says there's a relationship between the percentage of slope and the, and the width of the barrier of, of the buffer. And also the dirt, the area drained to that part of the stream. But I remember a table or something like a table, and it's not in the E code.
No.
So, and we may have to just use the map, somebody had it at some point, they.
They gotta get the, they gotta get mapping into E code, that's one of the real weaknesses. You know, there are a lot of towns that you can't get, you can get everything about their zoning, but you can't get their zoning back.
Woodstock puts it smart up on, online, and I have added to that.
Should be required.
George Cross said to me, you've got this old map up there, but not the scenic overlay. And I said, piece of cake, done, now it's up there.
Yeah.
Piece of cake.
It's important to have, I don't know, there's still places where you go where they say, oh, zoning maps up in the room at the town clerk's office and.
Yeah, well, along that, you're double checking something. Jackie and I and Melissa are standing there over this paper map to see whether, yes, in fact, this is an area.
Doesn't match.
Like, below the twelve hundred, because Ed Samers insists that there is, you know what, there isn't.
So John, another question, you know, we have the, uh, the, the, Gina was, uh, critical environmental area.
Yeah.
And if so, if a big development came in there and we have a conservation subdivision. Who determines, you know, if it's wetlands, we can, we can, you know, delineate a well in and the stream. But if it's a forest and we tell this applicant, well, we gotta conserve this, what's the guideline for that? Well, of the woods and the forest.
Yeah, I mean, your first, uh, tool is gonna be Seeker, because there, there's a question on the E A F part two specifically. About critical environmental areas. And you can use the Seeker process to protect critical environmental areas, you know, at the beginning of the process.
Question of mine, I, I have never been clear on how much authorities Seeker generates lots.
Well, Seeker generates, so, let's break that into two pieces. Critical environmental areas don't carry.
Right.
Think of themselves a lot of protection. What they basically do is they raise the profile of a particular resource. So that, you know, it has its own space on the E A F part two, and so you have to talk about it and you're the lead agency. And it's a statement by a community that when you create one, that, look, we are, we are, there's a comment, there's a, a consensus in our community. That this place is important, but beyond that, it's your general regulatory authority under Seeker. That's gonna give you the tools to protect something like that, but, you know, Seeker's a very powerful tool.
To add to that, we had reached out to WEP about what, how we should handle cases within the single, within the C E A. And they were working with, I think, Ingrid and somebody else from D C, so they're working on it for us to get us back a response.
Basically, you have to get a forester that's gonna tell you what, uh, what's best preserved.
Well, like, get a forester in there and also get Hudson in there.
Yeah.
And understand not only the quality of the forest, but also the quality of the habitat. And what's in, you know, what's growing in the understory and, you know, who's living there and all kinds, things like that.
We have on the maps from Hudson, but you also want on the ground evaluations.
Yeah, exactly.
So they get some of it from there. But we could actually say, no, you can't build in that forest.
Yeah, just the way you.
The rate is high quality forest.
Yeah, just the same way that you would be able on your Seeker to protect, um, other, you know, resources.
Well, but that wasn't clear to me that we had the power, because it, because Seeker turned it up. I didn't understand that we could say, no, you can't build there, because Seeker revealed this to be an.
Yeah, but we, we have to, uh, so, the Seeker process, right, isn't designed to. I mean, there are instances where projects get, you know, permits get denied because of the Seeker review. But most of the time, that's not the case. And, uh, D E C tells you that the purpose of Seeker is to identify potential adverse impacts early on in the process. And then to change the design of the process to minimize those impacts to the maximum extent practicable. So, the big benefit that Seeker brings to you is that if the issue. You know, like a critical environmental area might be a trigger for a POSDEC. And what does the POSDEC bring you? It brings you.
With Seeker.
The, the ability.
I think it would be pretty obvious.
Is to create, okay, we've identified this potential adverse impact that required more study. You have, you, Mr. Applicant, have to go out and study it and you have to come back with a proposal to minimize the impacts. And hopefully, the first, the, the, the way that the property get that area, critical environmental area gets preserved. Is the applicant sits down with their consultants and they say, how are we gonna minimize the impact here? And the first thing where everybody decides is, okay, we're gonna leave this part of the property alone. And they come in with a design that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, doesn't.
And Charlie Cross is really, typically when we see like things that come up. You've been very good about, okay, the road need to be escrow, we're gonna have a forester involved, we're gonna have. And you and I have gone back and forth a lot about who to use, but you know, planner, traffic engine, you know, you, you guys, you know, who's.
Land roads, you know.
But, exactly.
Well, right, but you, but you know, things are, we're at a point in language with you now where you guys need help. You know, it's not because you're not smart and you, and not because you don't know what you're doing. But we've lifted so many issues up into areas, I mean, in a way, it's a good thing, you know, and it, it's. It's a good thing in some ways, it can be, something is difficult, because it can make it hard for an average person to come in. And go through the process sometimes, but now, I mean, really. Uh, I see planning boards sometimes in rea- rea- really rural areas that aren't using any consultants, no planner, no engineer. And you really need that kind of help now, because a lot of applicants are on to the teeth with those kind of resources. And if you don't have someone that can help you digest and evaluate.
Anything bigger than pretty straightforward, we routinely escrow for a planner.
Good, good.
Now, lately, we're escrowing for traffic studies and, you know, hydrology could be, depend on the application.
Yeah.
I would like not to skip all the way and just talk about, about the requirements for us to. Qualify, because we've tried that, I want to be stopped by the town board.
What, hiring, hiring consultants?
Well, they want us to use it.
Excuse me?
Esper, at the applicant's expense.
It's so that the kind of constrains you.
Well, it's a, it's something that can be just between the planning board and the applicant. I mean, the, you know, um, so the rule is, you can't have kind of an open ended. Uh, if you're a planning board, you can't have an open ended sort of, the escrow account is kind of a form of plenty that just goes on forever. But otherwise, then if there are, as long as there's a good justification for that, and you can insist with an applicant that you. That there needs to be escrow funding for the consult, whatever kind of consultant that you need.
And if they wish to limit it?
If they wish to limit it, then what you're saying is we're gonna have to use our best judgment about. Making a decision about whatever particular technical area this involves.
Luckily, my time here, I haven't ran into anyone. Really batting an eye, I mean, I, you know, we do get a few little, uh, but I haven't had any real backlash about it and. I tried really to handle it, I mean.
I know you did.
And, and, and for the applicant and for you and for our consultants, and I try judgment. Like, I put a lot into like this being honest and forthright and educated and. And, you know, like, it's their money, they're paying their representative, but they're paying for yours too.
Let me tell you something else, it's the world map. If you wanna go, you can find places up in other places where we work that are out. You know, more toward Cooperstown and all that where, you know, there are just rural communities that are so rural that there's not a lot going on. They're not there, but if you're in the Hudson Valley and you, you're coming in to get approval for development, anywhere you go, that's. Municipalities and planning boards are asking for an escrow account and getting help in evaluating your application, it's just. Standard operating procedure.
Yeah, really.
One other question, John, now that Woodstock has much of it, but would floodplains come into conservation? Because if you can build in a floodplain, the building is better, but you build it under certain conditions, like the houses are probably, whether it goes in and out. But can a conservation subdivision eliminate a building in a floodplain?
I think it's worth, uh, uh, we don't have questions. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you could, and I mean, that'd be a legitimate, uh, uh, it would be a legitimate consideration. For conventional subdivision about whether, uh, it really makes sense.
These are the applicant's advantage compared to the cookie cart, because they could move things around the resort.
Yeah, and people actually do look at those things now when they're buying property. Because, just because of the insurance issue.
Sure.
Which is really real now, used to be, years ago, insurance companies didn't. I think the insurance was a lot easier to get.
You'd be amazed at what's in the five hundred year flood, flood area in Woodstock.
Yeah, yeah.
And it seems to be well above the stream.
Right, and we found out, you know, after having two hundred year storms in two years, you know, we found out that.
Yeah, it didn't touch me, but my little intermittent stream wanted to be a major river.
Yep, yep, so. But I think it's legit to bring it up, for sure. And it's, so that's a, that's another thing too, that's all a matter now.
I'm saying, it seems like it comes up a lot in the building department and they handle it pretty well.
It's easy to find that stuff.
Yeah.
Now.
We do a lot of.
Online, yes, I have it too, but he would look online.
Yeah, I mean, there was a time when the theme was kind of an abstract and, but all, all that stuff, the theme and lines and all that are all out there now.
Yeah.
So, um, it's readily accessible to property owners and people were thinking about developing property.
Did you get all the questions that we submitted for you? Because I don't remember what they.
I mean, I, I think we covered, the big one was whether it's, you know, whether it's the town, or the planning board forced somebody to do it.
Well, if it's in the town code, that's going back to you as the.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what we're looking at, John, let me go with that for a second, I know this is speculative. But at the moment, one of the definitions in the code that we are proposing. For a sub, a major subdivision is when you have been cutting pieces off a parcel. Based on its nineteen, I think it's nineteen ninety four map.
Okay.
When you get to five, you're a major subdivision and you're subject to the conservation subdivision. Now, tracking those cuts.
Yeah.
That's the trick.
I understand that. I know Nan likes that and I definitely understand the theory behind it, but you do have to have the record keeping. A notorious weak spot for municipalities.
Tell me.
You have to have.
This is the guy who finally filed, filed our CEA, like, what, two years after it passed?
No, a year after. It's like, that needs to be filed.
Yeah, I mean.
I know what I'm gonna do.
I'm worried about the town's memory being in this little box right here, about the maps. But I was talking to Tom about putting it all online, and I could, and that's.
Look, you're way ahead of things, having the little box, most of the time, it's. Oh, well, you know, we moved the town hall twice since then, and nobody really knows what happened to those subdivision maps and.
No, I think we're better than that, I think Jackie has been around a long time and really knows her stuff.
Yeah.
So she keeps track of it.
But it's a, it has to be kept track of scrupulously so that you can, you have the continuity to be able to make the calculations. And sometimes the way we can get around that is, not get around it, but is there, there are documents that have to be recorded in the clerk's office as part of.
Yeah, I mean, every time we.
Yeah.
So somewhere in.
Minutes, it's posted in minutes, and then any resolution that you do is filed with the town clerk. And then the map before it gets submitted back to the applicant.
Is that all stored electronically?
No.
Yeah.
Well, it never used to be, but with me it is, but if it's a final map, it isn't, because we don't have machines capable to do those size maps. But I have my own way.
But I'm encouraging municipal clients to use to force applicants to provide.
And I do that a lot, I do that a lot, um, I just may not have like.
If the law, as I read what I was looking at in my proposal, if the law says. Based on the condition of the parcel in nineteen ninety four, isn't that on the county law? In the deeds, isn't that researchable?
I mean, the subdivision, the subdivision maps, the filing requirement for subdivision maps was in existence then.
Yeah.
And you should be able to get the, from the clerk's office, the problem is that the amount of data. That's being placed on maps now, as you know, versus what was being placed on maps back then, it's a completely different world.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we run into instances where you're looking at maps from that era and they're, they are, they are maps, but they're not always particularly helpful.
County parcel maps are not accurate.
Yes.
You know, you get a flyover and it's from, from the ortho studies that New York State does, and the line goes right through a house.
Ten years ago, it doesn't look like anything that we're seeing now, maps, like I had maps come in from ten years ago and it's like, that's. You did what?
Today, one of the reasons I was late is we're trying to update maps from the subdivision up to the, um, we had to. Do the certified record proceedings, right, the maps were choking the. The maps that went to the health department that are packed with so much information and layers, they were choking the uptake.
Well, I have sixteen gigs here and they're telling me I really ought to have thirty two. And if I wanna go to the new release, they think sixty four would be better, the town is not buying my computer, they buy my license every year. It's a volunteer's license, a hundred dollars a year, no problem, because I'm not paid. But, um.
We were trying to help.
It has trouble sometimes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, you know.
And that's the issue too, with municipalities, is a system that's built to hold all this information.
And there's an expense associated with that, and we gotta back it all up.
Security, absolutely, and she's got a thumb drive in her desk, coming out like two years ago.
And I use that.
Everything I had at the time.
Do you know our larger applications come through, they can't come through on email, they can't. Even if they break it down, the files are too large, I am using the free, we transfer so you guys can see these files, okay? Because there is no system for it, so we have our applicants come and hand me a contract, that our system isn't even able to open. I have to find somewhere else and somehow else to figure, to break it down and make it, because I can't even do it in my office, because the system can't handle it.
We talked, so we talked about the.
And it's everywhere, it's not just here, I'm not, but.
It's just not the town of Woodstock, no, it's everywhere.
Technology is so advanced at where they're at, but there's, a serious issue with going digital, like why the paper records really.
A lot of the way municipalities run is this is what we've done, right?
Right.
And this is an area that's changed, I mean, I, I don't think municipalities, most municipalities in my experience. We're not good record keepers to start with, and now things have, everything that's happening. Which requires you to buy more technology to keep up the technology that you've got. Now they're shifting over to subscription for a lot of things, so it's a cost on an annual basis, and towns are reluctant.
It's not in their budget.
Even when it's not willing, even when it might be willing, they're reluctant to pay.
If I were a paid employee, they would have to have a commercial license, nonprofit, but it would not be a hundred dollars. And there are elements that I don't have access to, with Tom Heinz did something for me that was in his license level, not mine.
Yeah, and when you get, and when you decide to get in on this, you have to stay in.
Right.
So John, it seems to be that the advantage of this conservation subdivision to an applicant would be if they own a bunch of land. That has a lot of wetlands, a lot of constrictions, but they would ask for a conservation subdivision so they could make some bunch of smaller lots.
Yes, and just have, that's, that's the quick version of it, but if there was greater flexibility in the design. Because with Seeker, they, they're gonna have to deal with those environmental constraints anyway, you don't, you don't get to sidestep it.
So they could build a great big lot, and then they can have a bunch of small ones, and the average size is right.
And, and regular conventional subdivision didn't give you the flexibility, I do that.
Everything had to be funded.
But the other thing is, is that when you read the, or whatever zoning laws happen, you look at the R three, R five, R eight. So if you have a subdivision that you're making in an area where it's an R eight. Or in R five, and you have a conservation subdivision, that what you're saying is that. If you have them put in something like the CEA or the, the critical environmental area. It's, they can't make any smaller lots, unless we make some kind of a provision, because we're in a, a region.
No.
Where we already know.
Not so, has nothing to do with the CEA.
Once they block out all of the unbuildable area for various reasons, then that's calculated, that, that. That's determined how, that determines, the leftover land determines how many.
Units you can.
Units you can have.
And you have to remember the CEA is advisory, not regulatory.
No, 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 but even with that, we can't let, I thought Peter had said something about they'd be smaller little units that they can divide.
There's a different, there's a different way to think about it, so with conventional subdivision, there's, the, the. There, in most zoning districts in the town, there are minimum lot sizes, and, and that's, and you can't. You know, you can't, you have to comply with those minimums, and the, the problem is when you're designing a zone. It doesn't, it works in a lot of places, but there are some places it doesn't work, so conservation subdivision frees you from. The constraint of a uniform, just like, everything has to be the same, right?
Bigger, I think average comes out.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, okay, that's the answer, okay.
Now, the things that are bigger could include the conserve areas.
Yes.
Right, like typically now, yes, if you're in R three, you can't have a three acre lot, like first, that's the starting thing. Hamlet, smaller lots, but they're all different, yeah, so you just, that's where you start there, but then there's the broken rig stable, and when you get in setbacks, maybe you go against them. Got it, okay, I got it, okay, thank you.
We should sit down over coffee, we should sit down over coffee.
I know we should. Well, okay, right, right up to January.
I mean, I'm much easier.
How are we doing, any other questions for John?
This was very helpful, John.
We're gonna keep John in our pockets as long as he lets us.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, it's nice to be back over here, is, um.
Why, so, why don't you ask, why don't you ask me over here with the. At the moment, well, it isn't actually, you're not allowed to build over thirty five, uh, uh, thirty five degree or greater slope at the moment.
Yes.
Percent, not degree, percent. So whether we change that or not, that.
Probably can't get a wastewater system on the.
Well, okay, but let's assume.
Good engineering, they do.
Well, you can always, if you wanna throw enough money at something, yes.
But under net acreage, under net acreage, we would be saying, the area that you can calculate. To figure out how many lots you can get, excludes areas of twenty five percent slope or greater.
Yeah.
As well as the wetlands and the watercourses and all of yours, okay, the wetlands and watercourses and all of others, that's easy.
Yes.
The slopes turn out to be not that hard, because we have the mapping, we have the contour lines. And thank you, Tom Heinz, we now have the software where we can say, this is how many acres of twenty five degrees slope or greater.
Oh yeah, that's very nice, because.
Which is what I told Peter.
Doing that by hand is hard.
What I knew of it was, as we do with the wetlands and watercourses, we say, this is what our map shows. We know that this is not perfectly accurate, it's a pretty damn good evaluation, but it's not perfect. You have two choices, you can accept our numbers, or you can send out a wetlands delineator and a surveyor.
Or your own. Yeah, absolutely.
So if you're willing to take our numbers, which in this case just has to do with how many acres you have to subtract from buildable.
Yes.
Then, it's all done, now that Tom has done that for me and he sent to me.
Yeah, because it, because it changes everything, because what you're protecting is that it's not a random statement.
Yeah.
There's actually a, there's, there's a reasonable basis for what you've identified, and if they wanna cut it finer, they can.
They can send somebody out there with a GPS.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, it, now with how easy it is for them to do toko, it's not really a big.
Some sites we might wanna request. We've been, we've been on a few sites.
I may get, I don't know myself, but we use LiDAR now, so you can make four shots with a GPS, you can put LiDAR on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Exactly.
But we will, we will.
That's pretty accurate.
Pre-skinch, in a pre-skinch, we'll be able to say to them. This is what it looks like now, this is what you're gonna have in the way of buildable acres, based on our numbers, if you wanna contest them. Go get the watershed on.
Yes, see, we use LiDAR now, we do spot elevations to check it. Yeah. It's good.
Ain't technology granted?
It's amazing, it's just amazing actually how much we can know about property.
Oh, I do have one more.
Okay.
Whatever point they created the zones, they paid very little attention to lot outline, to parcel outlines. And so there are a bunch of, I mean, I don't know how many, but I can tell you, there are a lot of parcels in Woodstock that are in more than one zone.
Yeah.
Oh, that happens a lot.
I know, but my question is, I would, I would like to propose to the town board, at some point. When everything else is quieted down and everything is in place and we know what the zoning is, that I will go and create a new zoning map. And then maybe we talk to the, to the parcel owner about would they rather be the five or the three. So we outline it around the existing parcel.
I think it happens because of subdivisions and lot lines moving, because the first one I ever saw, I was like. Like, when you look at a map and you clearly see, like, you can see how it breaks out.
Mostly.
And then when, but, but when the surveyor maps it, it's very clear, and it's just my knowledge and looking at the application and saying, okay, up here we're at five. And up here we're down three, are you matching?
Well, a lot of the states, a lot of the states have a logic, they, the bigger lot sizes were in the higher elevations, but with the reception. Were much more difficult to put in, and development is harder to make a lot fit. Whereas if you did a lot of land to.
Two zones, that's part of my. Two zones, that's part of my time.
There's usually a new formula in the zoning law that tells you what happens when that happens.
There is.
And, but.
And I guess my question is, is it something to worry about? If you're getting to the point where somebody wants to subdivide a property that's in more than one zone?
I mean, you have to be aware of it and I think that in an ideal world, the easiest thing is to have, is to not have lots that are bisected by zoning districts.
Yeah.
Because even though there's new formulas in the zoning law to tell you, oh, you can and, you know, you're in zone A and zone B and you can do your uses in zone A and then sometimes they let you approach into zone B for maybe a hundred feet or something like that.
I was thinking about lot size.
Lots are all different.
Never mind, never mind uses, just lots after.
Or setbacks, which are all different.
Yeah.
Yeah, setbacks are all different.
Yeah, it creates a, it creates a host of little problems that are derived from the circumstance.
So is it worth proposing to the town board?
It's worth thinking about it. Somebody has to really look down and see, look, sit and and, and look at what the impact of altering the lines to meet those boundaries would be and to see whether that changes the, the, so each zoning district has a stated purpose, right? And as long as it theoretically, as long as the changes that you're making are all small and they don't really end up shifting a property into a zone where.
It's not appropriate.
Yeah, not appropriate.
I wonder if to that residential would be a lot less of a concern as a place.
Well, they're like a commercial. As far as I can see.
Do you know what I mean?
They're mostly residential. I mean, I could identify it.
I mean, that's just me agreeing.
The disputes about it come out mostly in a commercial context.
And I think asking, like, the parcel owner.
Yeah.
Which way they wanna date is wrong.
Yeah.
Lot sadly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a, make a decision.
Yeah.
On whether or not they go into the less restricted or the more restricted result and apply it.
Like you might say, if you're right on the line between three and five, you're gonna go with five because three, it's five is more protected.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, when my.
No. The other way.
You would go into three?
I would go the other way.
Yeah.
So people like that's the way that's, that's the way it's gonna value the less court. Oh, no, we're, we're not gonna go to court the other way a lot. Because you're putting more restrictions on the property, but not less.
But you don't have a vested right to your zoning designation.
Well, you know. When we did the water supply relay, which is recent law, when we did the water supply relay, the law said that any property that was within the, what I call the within mitten, but what was the name of the organization that did the waters, that did the water study, the who, who? Anyway, you know what I'm saying? There's this hidden shape thing that is over the water supply area. And the law said any property that's within, that's partially within that has to be in the district. That was the way the law was written. So we went and we drew it. And we went around the boundary, so we created that district and there were ten properties where the overlap was so small that it was really meaningless to include it in the business. But we did not, as far as I know, get anybody coming forward and say, how dare you? I've got a ten acre parcel here and there's two acres in the thing, it's a whole thing.
Yeah.
We just didn't, because that's what the law said.
I mean.
Well, sometimes that's the only thing as a practical matter you can do, because if you end up having a picture zone thing, it just isn't gonna go.
You have to remember, you guys see lot line revisions where I built a rock wall on your property, oops, I'm gonna pay you a thousand dollars so we can switch the lot lot. Like, let me see, this simple, okay, makes sense. And, and that's a lot of times where the different zones kinda come into play. So, but extremely like logical over here for a reason, you know, um, as opposed to the more, let's see what your land is and what, and what's going on and what we wanna conserve.
It's a case, it's absolutely almost a specific case.
Which is why I'm more, I'm any more.
Can change your zoning designation on you if you have some, even if you've got an application in the pipeline.
Right.
I mean, they don't like to do that because it's not really fair. You know, we always, when we're doing zoning laws, we're always thinking about, all right, we're gonna have to make a provision for applications that are in the pipeline and where they get involved.
Where every other person's aware. That's gonna be, that's, that's something to be aware of.
Well, John, the good takeaway I get from the conservation subdivision is who's gonna manage these?
Yeah, who's gonna manage the open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, how, 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 how do they, yeah, how are we gonna secure the stewardship of that open space longer?
But how do we avoid getting the town board involved in that?
They're not involved.
Okay.
But, so.
I do have a question because of the conservation subdivisions, obviously, the topic I'm aware of. How many subdivision, major subdivision, come before the planning board in your tenure? I mean, in other words, what's the potential for having conservation, or having subdivisions, major subdivisions, um, applicants coming?
Well, it's a good question. I mean, major subdivisions, we've only in the last ten years had three or four.
Three or four.
And there's not that many lots out there that are big enough.
Right.
Left that.
That's right.
Especially if you subtract the kind of constraints that we do.
Actually, I haven't mapped that, but I could.
Okay, that, that helps.
Now that I've got the statistics, I could actually calculate that.
And Woodstock's not alone that way either. I mean, there's just generally, you just don't see major subdivisions that well.
And thirty-eight percent, actually it's more than that because I didn't count Stan acres and I didn't count the guy in Eastern Ring with the D and C forestry.
Yeah, oh yeah.
At least, more than thirty percent, more than thirty-eight percent of the land is in permanent protection in this town.
Based on the laws already, right?
Because of New York City.
Yes, yes.
New York State, Como, Woodstock line of concerncy, Birdcliff.
Mm-hmm.
I'm what's on the list at the moment.
Yeah.
And awareness about all the stuff that we've been talking about, this creative market force that, you know, the profit margins on a major subdivision aren't the same way, aren't the same that they were twenty-five years ago. Because everything that we're talking about, the engineering consultants and mapping, that's all money out of pocket at the beginning of the process.
Piersville and my little subdivision, Blazy Brook, it was easy. Cut out the land, put it on there. I'm in an R eight because I'm near the soccer, I'm eight tenths of an acre. Talk about the pre-existing number. And I may have the largest, I'm not sure, I haven't checked yet, but I should have one of the larger lot, I might have.
What they accomplish during that?
They just talk to any subdivision.
Yeah, well. I mean, there's nothing wrong with one acre lots, except we can't do them, except in the very limited parts now. And there're one and eighths there actually, not ones.
Okay. How are we doing? Any other questions? A lot to think about.
That's your rule?
Yeah, you don't have to remember all of this stuff, you know, that's what your consultants report.
And if you're looking.
Yeah, but you have to be generally aware of it so that you know that when an application comes in the door, it just rings some bells to say, okay, there's some things that we gotta start looking at and at the beginning of the process.
And thank God Ecode and even a word document and even a PDF are keywords for it.
Yes, yeah.
So you can find what you need to know without reading all of the.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just think, planning board, you used to come into a stack of papers to every meeting and you now.
And Paul Shultes was the only person who actually knew what was there. Well, Peter knows well and John does, but not for these purposes.
Oh, that was the problem.
Absolutely right. And we use Cocksey as a model because they, uh, they require conservation subdivisions and they're, they're one of the markers and.
Well, they, they have minor subdivisions under certain circumstances.
They, what they did was they got the town board to give the planning board the ability to do it themselves instead of having to go to the town board.
It was to give them the authority. They appointed the planning board, yes.
Does that seem feasible here?
Yeah, that's what we have in the law.
It could be.
The supervisory.
Exactly what's in the new law. And it includes, because of the Cocksey example that Peter brought up, it includes the possibility for minor subdivisions. If we feel that the land is warranted and it's more than fifteen acres and more than, and three or four lots, we could require it. If it's five lots, we have to. And that's in the law, if the law passes, which I fully expect that it will, fairly close to what it's in.
Well, thank you, John, very much.
No, you're welcome. I hope that it was helpful. It was great to.
It was a downer.
We got triggered by a false start of this, uh, we're unsure.
I hope you don't say anything.
No, that's all, you know, that's. We have a few more business to do.
Oh my gosh, you guys.
No, that much.
We handled most of it.
You know, but other than that.
Mr. Pan, wait.
Okay, well, then I'll, um, open the queue up and get out of here. But anyway, I thank you all. You know, this was really fun and, um, you know, we can always talk again whenever you want, you know. Especially in.
I have my speed dial, don't worry. Just kidding.
Like I have you on.
Thank you, Justin, everything.
There you go.
We have a little more business to do, but in the beginning of the meeting, we did read Ken's letters and we thank you, Ken, for, uh, doing that legwork. And, and.
We thank you, Ken, at just about every meeting, Peter does, so now you're hearing it firsthand.
We're willing to.
Mm-hmm.
You are a very valuable member.
Definition of concern is whether it's true that what Ken wrote, the word concern.
The problem is, yes, but the fir, the permanent secondary areas take care of that.
Well, the one question you asked, I didn't get answered, is what are you doing to conserve, to protect the conserve area? If it's not a conservation easement?
Well, he talked about that. He said, less than ideal situation.
There's kind of three options. It starts at conservation easement, the second, the second would be deeded and at the bottom would be like an HOA.
Deed.
Now, he first said on his document, who was enforceable?
Well, that's exactly.
Going to be a lot.
A whole protect area?
Yes, yes.
That's the issue.
That's useless.
It may have made it useless, but depending on the context, I think ten acres, it's probably gonna work. But other places, it's a course of non-reversibility.
That is exactly the point. Just, HOAs have a, of course, you can enforce.
Just so you know, because it was only, uh, whatever, however many lots there were, they were kinda wrapped up when they went to a lawyer for HOA.
Wow, too bad for a lawyer.
I know, and I hear you and I get it and I agree, but that's the schematic of the real world. Like, you're kidding me. You want an HOA for what?
Well, the only reason, I mean, there's.
So we have to do this.
There's two reasons we would have to do it. One is the road management, the road maintenance, and the other is overseeing the concern land. And given the, given the motivation of the, of the developer, of the owner, that wasn't so hard, but it could be another course.
But she wouldn't be consideration.
I know, but I don't know what to do about it and he obviously doesn't want to do that either.
So I'm gonna have a question. We did our resolution, right? Is it, so is it okay? Uh, that's it, right?
He thinks Ken, I love that, that's great.
Okay, motion to return.
Second.
I was gonna ask you a question. What was it?
I was thinking about map.
Um, do you know?